Why are you nodding so much? You're right underneath. Good evening. Welcome to City Council Study Session Meeting of, excuse me, Tuesday, July 30th, 2024. One item on the agenda, discussion regarding the city's Norman infrastructure needs related to the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority's Access Program.
Mr. Mayor, I'll give you a quick intro to why we're here this evening. About three weeks ago, we received a call from the city manager's office in the city of Moore. Mr. Mitchell asked if we could meet to discuss the intersections at Indian Hills, 36 Northwest, which becomes Telephone Road in Moore. So Mr. Sturts, Ms. Stevenson and I met with Mr. Mitchell and his team in Moore, and he shared with us that they had received a communication regarding the design status of the east-west corridor of the turnpike and its relation to that big intersection in Indian Hills, 36 Northwest and Telephone Road. They talked about what Moore might choose to do in terms of preparation for the project, and their request was, you know, what were we working on on our side of Indian Hills and what that all might look like when it comes together. Within a few days, we received a phone call from the Turnpike Authority, and they requested a meeting to have a very similar conversation about their design efforts on the east-west corridor from Newcastle all the way out to 48th Northeast generically. And I believe that's where Mr. Sturts and Ms. Stevenson's presentation begins.
All right. Thank you, Daryl. Thank you for being here tonight to talk about this. Scott Sturts, Director of Public Works. This is kind of a twofold meeting, one to bring you up to date on what we know about the latest turnpike information, and then also to talk about some further steps and future steps that have been requested of us to be able to move forward on this project. So to start off, just kind of on a quick history of the OTA, back in December of 2021 is when they first announced publicly the Access Oklahoma program. Not a lot of detail at that point, just some pictures up on the board. That moved forward into more work and more presentations that included more information. But the Access Oklahoma is $5 billion, and it does include both the alignments through Norman that we'll be discussing tonight. Then in March 20, March 22nd of 2022, Norman passed a resolution opposing the turnpikes through Norman. Then if you look down through there, in June of 2022, OTA authorized the bonds. Then the Council of Bond Oversight gave conditional approval resolution pending the court actions that were pending at that time that had been brought about from Norman. Then September 6th of 2022, Norman filed a brief protesting legislative authorization of the south extension. And I'll clarify which ones those are as we move forward here. Then October 10th, 2022, the State Supreme Court assumed jurisdiction of the OTA bond issuance application. And then August 1st, 2023, was when the Supreme Court of Oklahoma ruled that OTA had statutory authority to build the new turnpikes included in Access Oklahoma. So at that point, all the lawsuits that were pending had been concluded, and the OTA began work back on the entire program. There are projects underway on the Turner Turnpike as well as up in the Tulsa area that are part of Access Oklahoma, so things are already underway and under design at this point.
Resolve whatever's going on?
Extra noise?
Yes.
I think Brenda wanted to ask for us to be able to echo. A little feedback.
The delays are too. Thanks so much. No problem. So OTA did request a meeting from staff. So on June, on July 15th, 2024, Daryl Piles, Shannon Stevenson, and myself attended a meeting at the OTA. They had members of the OTA staff as well as members of PO, which are their project managers for Access Oklahoma, were in attendance at that meeting. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of good, robust discussion, a lot of back and forth. Some of the things that were discussed, and I'll be going into more detail over a lot of these items as we move forward, was where are they at with the current design and what's going on with the east-west corridor connector, which is what they call the EWC, and that is the part that goes across Indian Hills and then goes up and ties into the Kickafu. So as I use that throughout, that's kind of gives you an understanding of what that is. They had a lot of questions about what Norman's plans were, especially what we were planning to do with our roadways that connect to the north at Indian Hills and further, so that they could get an idea of what they needed to incorporate into their plans. There was also a lot of discussion about what would Norman like to see, a lot of things that we would need. So we had a lot of discussion about that and a lot of good back and forth. And then also, they gave us a little bit of an update on project status and timeline. So the map that you see there at the bottom is actually directly from Access Oklahoma. The information that we discussed that day was all directly from the Access Oklahoma webpage, so we did not see any direct plans or any other information than what I'm going to share here with you today. But the yellow is what is currently under design and what they're currently working on, and that's going to be done in phases. And I'll be talking through the sections, the following slides. And blue is what is currently under study and will be future design work that will be completed. So just so you understand what the colors mean there on that map. So to kind of start breaking it down, looking this a little more detail, I want to start out, look at this east-west connector. This is the current project, what you see on the screen right now, basically beginning there at I-44 at Newcastle, coming across through Norman, across I-35, and terminating, I'm going to call it 24th Avenue Northwest. I think it's a little bit, give or take on that right now, those plans are still in design. Those plans are approaching 60% plans for the whole corridor in this area. And again, I just wanted to point out that Access Oklahoma is where all these drawings come from. But as you look there, I wanted to point out a couple of key items. As you come out of Newcastle and you come to a point that there begins a bridge, that bridge structure will span all the way over the Canadian River and the Canadian River floodplain, across the 10-mile flats or parts of it, and it will be a 7,000-foot-long bridge. It'll be the longest bridge in Oklahoma. This is going to be an impressive sight to see. And then I went ahead and pointed out there at 72nd Street, or Second, sorry, 72nd Avenue Northwest is actually our city limits. I've got that pointed out there, just so you can kind of see what is in our city limits and what is not. So to focus a little bit more on what we're talking about within the city limits, this is kind of a little blow-up. It goes a little bit further over to 72nd, but this was kind of the most pertinent information. This is what we're calling Phase One internally. That's not what they're calling it, so don't call it. They're asking about Phase One. That's just for me to keep it all straight and keep us in-house discussing it well. The first thing I want to point out is that they do have access points called at 60th Avenue Northwest and 36th Avenue Northwest. And you can kind of see those, where you can see the vertical lines going north and south. Then also, kind of what we would request as part of our future plans moving forward would be one-way frontage roads. We'd want to see those all the way from 60th Avenue Northwest all the way over to 48th Avenue Northeast. That'd be kind of the extent of the urban area, if you want to call it that. But with this project, it would end in or around 24th Avenue Northwest.
So Scott, just when we talk about what that service road or frontage road may serve in that context of the efforts underway by your Comprehensive Land Use Plan volunteers, we're looking for residential density opportunities so we can ensure our growth stays in between the 48s. So service roads or frontage roads in between the 48s do provide that opportunity for transit-oriented development, higher densities, because the frontage roads would provide that access to that future turnpike. So when, you know, why would, why are frontage roads important? They are important if the goal is to achieve high-density residential development up against our northern boundary at Indian Hills.
Scott, is that lower frontage road Indian Hills Road?
Yes, it is. That's how it's currently laid out. And as you'll see, once we get on the other side of I-35, it does switch to where the north service road would be Indian Hills Road, so we move further down into Norman. And you can see that, it's very clear on the, where that occurs on the drawings. A lot of discussion that we had about the frontage roads was two-lane in east direction, curb and gutter, modern storm sewer, all the items that you'd expect to see in a normal urbanized area. There was even discussion about the type of inlets, so it was some good discussion. Also, so you'll have 60th and 36th, which will be interchanges, if you will, but also 48th will go through, so it will not be terminated, it will go under. There'll be an overpass at 48th, but you'll be able to get off at 60th or 36th and get to 48th. So it's only a mile apart. And then some of the other items I want to point out is we're also asking for 36th Avenue Northwest to be constructed to Norman's current design. Yes, sir.
I didn't want to derail the presentation too much, but while we're on the topic of one-way frontage routes, was the discussion at all had about who is going to pay for those?
So at this point, the Turnpike OTA is willing to do that. They would turn them over to us, just like I-35, and they'd be our maintenance in the future. So in this case, we'd be picking up two lanes of traffic on the north side through this area. I appreciate that. Yeah, absolutely. The interchanges at all three of these roadways will be five-lane?
Yes, sir.
On that same note, so we'd be, they'd be constructing multiple miles of frontage road that the city would then have to take over maintaining, paying to maintain forever?
Yes, sir.
And our northern city limit line, basically, both directions of the frontage road would be in Norman's city limits, because the city limit line does go quarter-mile north of Indian Hills?
Goes a half-mile through this area and then further on the other side of I-35 drops down toward is Indian Hills Road.
And then the front, those frontage roads, they go across I-35 also?
I will be getting to that, but yes, they have committed to taking them across I-35.
So there'd be no disruption in getting around?
What does the cost on something that look like for that, if you're taking over those two lanes of traffic? Is it mowing? Is it?
There would probably be, those details aren't worked out yet. I don't know exactly where that maintenance would switch. Along I-35, I-35 corridor, ODOT maintains a portion, then where the fences, we take over and go to the other side. So we haven't exactly set those boundaries yet. That'd be future discussions that would be had. And as far as a cost, it'd be the cost of mowing, and then also any, anytime we had to go out there and do some road repair. Again, we had a four-lane Indian Hills section already proposed in the 2019 bond program, so this would be the same amount of lane miles that we would be taking over anyways through this section.
I was just curious. I know it's like hard with all the details in the air, but just like, do you foresee it being a 3% increase to Public Works or?
I would not even expect it to be that much, no. I mean, we're only talking a few miles of service road. When you look at the, you know, 700 lane miles we already have in Norman, it's not.
Would there be a way to kind of tally, though, as we go through all of these proposed? Well, we're not in the blue yet, but I'm kind of curious, like, what this adds to our budget overall?
So, Your Honor, there's, this is why we have these conversations, the thought, and maybe we look at it differently. We have development on the south side, you can see the neighborhoods, and how those neighborhoods are designed. If you think about a similar road layout on the other side, the other side of Indian Hills, there's a lot of plating that council's approved on that side for housing in various densities. To be able to design those neighborhoods and those communities where there isn't a whole lot left that winds up being the publics to maintain but could be part of the developments to maintain, curb gutter, sidewalk, you know, block wall, main entrance into neighborhoods, I think through design, we could really reduce what that long-term maintenance obligation looks like for us.
Because what we have on Rock Creek now, that there aren't gutters, there aren't all those things. So it'd be that mowing in a normal section line road, because they're older design road. I don't think it's going to bring up any large amount. It's going to be more, because they're going to have gutters, we're going to have to sweep them and things like that. I don't think it's a lot.
Yeah. I don't expect it for this section, for it to be minimal increase in cost, because like I said, we're already proposing a four-lane section through anyways. So it'd be what we'd be maintaining if we took it over.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify that, the widening of Indian Hill Road is only from 48th to I-35?
No, that's correct. That's what I'm saying.
Just a mile and a half. But we're talking about new frontage roads that go all the way across the whole north side of the city?
To 48th Northeast. That's, in this section, what I'm saying is it would be minimal. There would be some.
This section, yeah. But overall, we're looking at several miles of new, new roads that the city of Norman will have to maintain once OTA builds them.
Which is no different than anytime we have a new subdivision and new roads are built and we take over and maintain them. So that's pretty standard for any new development that we see. If you look at this as a development, if this was a residential subdivision, they build the roads and we take them over. So it's very similar to what we do with any development or any big commercial industrial development. They build it, we help, we maintain it in perpetuity.
If we didn't have the voter-approved street maintenance bond, would we be able to afford to maintain all these roads that we have?
So that bond really goes down to being into the neighborhoods. It doesn't really maintain roads such as this. We could, I don't really be at the level that we do now. We're starting to get to a point now where we're really seeing most of our neighborhood streets. There are still some that need a lot of work. We're really starting to see ourselves starting to catch up. We're seeing ourselves, I think that when you, when you look at other communities, central Oklahoma and around Oklahoma, I think that our, we do a lot more in our neighborhoods than most any other communities do because of that street maintenance bond.
So, and Councilmember Holman, to that point, I think it's important to recognize, council approves road design standards. So if a developer's going to build a subdivision, he builds a road up to our standards, or we're not, we're not taking ownership of it, so we know what we're getting. In this particular scenario, same thing, we would deliver design criteria to say, build these frontage roads that meet our usual design criteria. It would be a road like we would build if we were going to build ourselves.
Sure. My point is just that through the voter-approved street maintenance bond, as a city, we have to take out debt, millions of dollars in debt to pay for maintenance of all these subdivision streets that we've, that developers have built over the years, and new streets like this potentially. So just making the point that we build more infrastructure and we have to keep taking debt out to try to pay for maintaining it forever. So how sustainable is that from a financial standpoint for us and cities across the country? So just thinking about, yeah, if we're going to have several miles of new frontage roads on two sides be built, how do we afford to maintain those frontage roads forever? Just like, how do we afford to maintain all the neighborhood streets in new subdivisions?
Yeah. I think the math, and that's an excellent math problem, the thought of higher-density development on the north side of this drawing, and what that same millage rate would generate, applied to, I have no idea how many potential residential units could line both sides of the frontage road, but it is, that's a very good math problem for us to be able to try to drill down into. What, what would the same millage rate generate in maintenance, and does it meet or exceed the cost of maintaining those new roads?
And definitely, the more dense it is, the more able it is to pay for itself without debt having to be taken.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
How many miles are going through Norman?
I haven't calculated the miles.
Well, why not? So if it's 10 miles and four lanes in each mile, that's 5.6% increase, or 5.7% increase in number of lane miles that we have to maintain per road. So it's not under 3%. It's almost twice.
But for this section, we've got a large section, it's already going to be expanded to four-lane with current projects. And I'm saying in this section, I'm not, I'm not talking the whole, this section, we've got, like councilmember said, about a mile and a half that would be improved to four-lane. We don't know what we'd do beyond that to 60th. I think that in the future, we would take that all the way to 60th to the four-lane. It's just not in the current, current bond. So in this section, and I'm getting, yeah, looking at this, I'm saying that in this section, it'd be much less than a 3% increase.
All right. So if there's a one and a half mile stretch that we're planning on making four-lane anyways, then, okay, 4.9% increase to our number of lane miles that we have to maintain.
In this area. I'm looking at overall throughout the city. And overall throughout the city, it's, the percentage is way less than that. I understood the question to be, what will the overall budget be for the city of Norman increase, not what would the increase be for this section of roadway. So it's way less than 3% overall, and this section, it may go up. But again, they're going to be building a brand-new road. I would expect the lifecycle on that to be 20 years. So we're looking at 20 years, and right now, we'd probably be doing maintenance out there on that section anyways. So you really start getting into some weird balancing act.
So the 700 lane miles is just what's pictured?
No, no, that's.
That's citywide, the whole citywide.
Yeah. And I threw a number out there. I don't know that that number's actually 100% accurate.
So if we're adding 34 lane miles to a system that's 700 lane miles large, that's 4.9% increase. All right.
But again, none of the turnpike would be our responsibility. That would all be the OTA responsibility. In this case, we'd be adding, you know, like you said, that'd be a less distance. We're only adding two new lanes for a portion of that.
So you're going to those four lanes as two of them being?
Well, there's two existing, so we're only adding two additional lanes.
Okay.
And part of that's going to be in the city of Oklahoma City, Moore, or incorporated on the other side.
All right. So that's about 2.5%.
Okay.
It's still not insignificant.
Now, the question was, what would be the increase in budget? I'm saying the budget increase would be less than 3% annually. I didn't, that, that was the question in the response. So the math of that isn't what I was responding to.
All right. So the council knows, because you haven't looked, it's about 2, 2.5%.
So the frontage road that we're discussing would be two lanes, 12-foot wide each. So that was the negotiation. That way, we're minimizing. We don't want it to be too wide. We want it to be safe. So I was discussing the 36th Avenue. We want to make sure that it's constructed to the standard that we're building it to, which would be five lanes at this location, plus the 10-foot multimodal path. We want to make sure the multimodal path is included in there, because that's part of an overall master plan to get from Norman through Moore, through Oklahoma City, all the way to Edmond. I haven't seen the whole map, but it sounds really cool. So we'd had that, and they've agreed to that. And then the other thing that we've requested is to look at green infrastructure to protect our water quality, because we do want to protect our water quality. I know that there's a lot of discussion about wetlands. I think wetlands is one tool in the tool chest. I think there's a lot of other items that can be used very successfully that may be more effective and maybe better and less maintenance. So I don't want to restrict it to wetlands. I want to make sure that we keep it open to more opportunities that we can look at.
And on that slide, you, it's, I asked Mr. Sturts, so I hear all kinds of things about the Little River, but where can I see the Little River? And it's really hard at grade to know when you're standing over the Little River, but from the aerial, you can kind of recognize that darker green area heading from the left side of the screen over to the right, and it's more visible east of I-35. And the concept of wetlands, Mr. Chris Mattingly in Utilities had kind of coined that phrase that, you know, where's an opportunity we could invest in wetlands, even from a Norman Next project to develop ecotourism along the north side of Lake Thunderbird. But in one of the AMES subcommittee meetings, they had described an opportunity to really turn the Little River into an amenity in a linear wetlands design concept. And this is where accountants don't really grab the visual impact of what that could be in terms of amenities to high-density transit-oriented development along the Little River. It, you know, the opportunity to have that improved in a way that improves water quality and provides really an interesting focal point that people would say, yeah, I want to live next to that feature along Norman's northern boundary.
Rowway, is that suggesting that we use our wetlands as a filter?
They are very effective for that. They can be, they've been shown to help in treatment. They obviously are very well-known for removing nitrogen, phosphorus, total suspended solids. And there are studies that are being shown that other pollutants are very easily removed through wetlands because of the structure of it, but also just giving it any opportunity for natural attenuation for any containment field to drop out. Anytime we could slow the pace of that water, get it slowed down. There's lots of other ideas that are out there that could be proposed. It just gives more opportunities for more contact with grass. If you're using a grass swale instead of utilizing a pipe, you know, don't want to use, I'm not a, I don't really like concrete flumes. I like to see grass flumes, because it gives the grass, it gives contact time. Aeration, it also increases aeration. Aeration can help remove contaminants, depending on what contaminants you're looking at. So I do think that anything we can do that's green infrastructure, that increases our, our contact time, our aeration slows down our flows, is going to help remove any contaminant that we would find in any of our water systems from any of our, any potential sources.
Have we done an environmental impact study on that area?
They are currently doing studies.
So you don't know. Okay. Can you continue?
Well, but we don't have any studies saying that it will impact either. So I think we're in the middle on that. So studies are being conducted, and we're saying that we want to get out ahead of that. The turnpike is also very, they've already reached out and had conversations with SUGOMCD, Bureau of Reclamation, and they have already committed that anything that they do, they will work with both of those groups, as well as the city of Norman and the other city that they're passing through, to try to do things that will help benefit water quality and obviously wetlands. Because they are going to probably disturb some wetlands going through here. It's just fact, there's wetlands in this corridor. And they will have to do mitigation of those wetlands with the Corps of Engineers under federal permit. And typically, those wetland mitigation projects are not one-for-one, they're usually two-to-one, or it really depends on how much you're doing. There is the opportunity that you can do wetland banks and take it elsewhere, but they really want to try to be true to the watershed and stay in the watershed and treat it within the watershed.
Okay. So the answer is, we don't know.
The studies are ongoing.
We don't know. Go ahead.
And we can, I'll concede, we don't know at this point. So the east-west connector, I want to kind of point out the interchange there at Indian Hills and I-35, just so if anybody hasn't heard me say it before, there's a list of worst engineering feats in the United States, and this interchange was on the list at one point. I'm really not proud of that fact. But when this gets full build-out, it will be five levels high. So you can imagine some of those giant ones in Dallas. In fact, the picture there is actually the George W. Bush Turnpike in Dallas, Texas. This would have the same kind of flow and movement, so you'd see something similar to that. Continue, I'll just. But this won't all be completed upfront, because the traffic volume won't be there and the need won't be there to begin with. For example, when this first phase is built, there won't be a turnpike going to the east continuing onto I-40. There's no need to build every interchange necessary for that and have it dead-end. So that may, you'd start seeing those come online as extended east. As traffic picked up, they may start adding new slip ramps and new opportunities so that they can keep the traffic flow moving appropriately through there. So this isn't what you're going to see in the first phase. This would be long-term. I can't tell you when it may all get built out that way. And the other thing that I find very interesting is that the bridge that goes to the east, as you're coming off of that, you go over the train tracks, you go over the Little River, and then you continue over a floodplain. And then there's a flooding issue at 24th, and they are right now extending that bridge and trying to determine where it's going to terminate, but it will cover most of those areas to not be impacting the floodplain, the waterway, or the train tracks.
So I'm willing to accept a certain level of a turnpike in this town, because it sounds like it's being forced on us. We don't have much choice. However, this gives me so much heartburn that I don't even really have a response for it. If we're going to negotiate something, I want to negotiate this out of our town, because I, this is a non-starter for me personally. So I just had to get that out there.
Curious about the train tracks part of the bridge. Is that already existing or new? Like, where are the train routes around there?
So the train tracks are directly, they're east of the interstate, so they're right there. So once you get to that, that would go over the top of it. Currently, it's just a normal railroad crossing at grade. So this would give us a great separation.
And this wouldn't be like tying into OTA in the future or anything?
It would not.
Okay, just to make that clear. Okay, I feel the same way about this, but you know. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear on this, so as this interacts with I-35, and we're, it's going to phase in different projects as this expands. So we're going to continually be seeing So we're going to continually be seeing down. There's really no way to avoid delays and things on I-35 if it's continually taking new construction under, through this project to be an overpass, to be turned into a five-deck.
I, I don't really have a, a direct answer for that because that's going to depend on the phasing and the planning and how they construct it. They, they may, I know, you know, a lot of times you'll see that sometimes they'll go ahead and do some of those big pillars in advance so they don't have to be out there in the middle as much instead of having to be shutting down as many lanes. So I, I just, that's going to depend a lot on the construction and the phasing of the projects.
I'm going to agree with Matt that, that is, that I can't imagine that being in Norman, and I really hope that we're able to work around that and get rid of it.
I think that a lot of what makes it looks more complicated is that there's frontage roads in all four directions. If you took those off, it would look just like what's, what's going to be going in at I-240 right now. And I think we can all admit that that has been a disaster for a long time. And so it's just the modern interchange. But I think it's when you start adding in, a lot of what you see there is those, making sure that those frontage roads function and go across the interstate as you, as you had mentioned, or go under and continue north into the future.
So though, in this design, if someone is getting off of I-35, will they be able to access 36th Avenue directly? So the big, the big vacant property that's there that could be developed, is that property losing access to I-35 directly because of that interchange?
I don't, I, I don't think so. But again, with that same final plans, I mean, this is a, a line drawing. It's hard to see that directly. But, you know, I mean, if you've ever gotten off at I-35 or George W. Bush Turnpike, you can get off, you can get onto the frontage road. You can go right down the frontage road to, to access. All the properties are right there. It just depends, you know, a lot of times as you get off, you've got, you know, George W. Bush Turnpike this way, you know, whatever roadway this way. And so that'll all be laid out. But without seeing final details and final design, I'm, but I'm, I don't think there's any intent.
So again, Councilmember Holm, we did share that, that reality that when we look at commercial viability, that is really, really a valuable piece in Norman's portfolio of available retail space. And we can't lose access to it. Or, you know, we just, you know, devalued that particular parcel, and we really need the acreage available. There are just very few pieces that big for future commercial development in Norman. So that's, it's mission-critical to make sure access is maintained.
I agree, and that's one of the things that's given me the same kind of hesitation about that design is, is it closing off access to one of the more valuable pieces of commercial space left in Norman on I-35? And then agreeing with my colleagues too about just, I, I like that you mentioned that it was one of the worst designs or worst projects ever. But yet, we keep doing them here and everywhere else around the country. And we haven't been able to found some other way to address transportation than doing these massive things. And I can recall this being built, that interchange, you know, going to Dallas as a kid and growing up. And just every time you go down there once a year or so, you see the pillars up and the, and the flyovers. And I know there's one in Tulsa too that people talk about as being a ghost, ghost freeway, ghost turnpike, where the pillars and everything were built, but then they were never connected to anything. And there's apparently no plan to currently connect them to anything. And so.
I thought that was currently either in design or under construction.
Well, they've been there for years, more than a decade, I guess.
They just drove past them today and then we're just.
They're still there, there. So, Councilmember Holm, this, this, you know, one of those conversations to be had, an initial thought is, do those frontage roads fly over I-35? The current plan says yes. If that frontage, if Indian Hills flies right over as a frontage road across I-35, the railroad tracks, and the Little River, is it more important for that connectivity or more important to cut that whole top of the profile off of this structure? So it could just boil down to council's preference. If it is, if it is assumed that council's preference is all the frontage roads in all directions go over or under the turnpike, we wind up with a very large deck. If, if the deck height is the primary concern, get that down to a minimum, it may be achieved, but it may mean the frontage road stop at I-35 and stop at the turnpike. So just, those are puzzle pieces, and I think they're wonderful conversations that absolutely need to be worked through. And you'll get to, you know, instill your preference in whatever that ultimate deck structure looks like.
I think the issue with that, as you mentioned, is if we don't, if it doesn't do that, then you'd be forcing people to get onto a turnpike just to get across to the other side or have to go a mile south, a mile across, you know, and make a pretty significant detour. And you'd be cutting off access to property that already has access right now. And so, yeah. I think if this happens, it would have to go across and connect that way. But, yeah, I, you know, just, I don't know. It does seem out of place here.
So the OTAs said they're paying for the, the service roads from 48 to 48. What about beyond 48?
There would be no, the, the, currently, there's no plans for service roads beyond 48. They would terminate at that point.
Really? So there will no longer be an Indian Hills alternative beyond 48?
I'd have to, when we get that, I've got that here in a moment, and we can look at that further.
All right.
I don't think that the intent is to get rid of it because I don't think the alignment quite does that. I'd have to, we just need to look at that closer. And here you can see, this is going further. Basically, you've got 24th Avenue Northwest there on the left side and going over to about a half-mile past 24th Northeast over on the right side. This is also currently under design. A little behind in the design schedule because they want to get I-35 to I-44 completed first. Access points on this section would be 12th Avenue Northwest, 12th Avenue Northeast, and 48th Avenue Northeast. You can see the ramps there for that and the considerations that they have on that. You can see there on the right side where it does make the change toward the north frontage road becomes on Indian Hills and the south frontage road is south of, of the line now. So that's kind of where that change happens. I know there's some cemeteries and you avoid some other items there. So that's kind of where that makes that change. Again, our request would be the one-way frontage roads basically on this section, 24th Northwest or the 24th Northeast or a little past it, ultimately to 48. Again, the 10-foot multimodal trail on the south side. There needs to be some discussion from us on where we want to terminate that at some point. At this point, I don't think that we need that level of detail, but we will in the near future. And then again, green infrastructure to protect and work on water quality. So that's kind of the next section. And on this one, they're still going to have, anywhere there's not an interchange, the roadway will go under, so there will be an overpass. There will be no roads cut off. They're still looking at five-lane sections through most of it. There are some of these that I really don't anticipate would ever be more than a three-lane section. But those are discussions we can have at a later date. We don't have to use all of it if we don't need it. I think most of you are pretty familiar with the roadways in this area and what they all look like. The last section that's currently under design is basically coming from where the Kickapoo ends, coming south just into city limits, a little past 120th. This section is kind of interesting to me. I, I drew the Norman city limits in there. It goes out of city limits, into city limits, and out of city limits. So the city limit, it's not all within the city limits. Like I said, this is also currently under design. The access points in this section would be at 120th and 156th. Both of those interchanges are actually outside Norman city limits, but they would tie back into Norman city limits. This section does not have frontage roads. And in this section, we just want to make sure that we're preserving our water quality and looking at stormwater quality measures like green infrastructure again.
And in that concept of frontage roads, frontage roads may be perceived as growth-inducing, you know, to make it more convenient for that access. And we recognize that was not council's desire to entice development east of 48.
Don't we know how many in the current yellow line plans, how many homes are impacted by this plan yet?
They, they don't yet because they, they're, they're not to the point they know how much right-of-way they actually need to acquire. So what's shown here is kind of the maximum, I think, would be the worst-case scenario, but they are currently in that, but we don't know. We haven't, that information's just not been shared with us.
At least 250.
In just this section.
In just, in just this yellow line section of Norman.
Is that for the, all the turnpike area? Just the East-West Connector?
Yeah, the entire turnpike area is about six, a little over 600.
There's that latest information on that.
And so if we expand frontage road that needs more land and takes more space and potentially reduces more residences?
If you're looking at a 10-foot multimodal path, Mr. Sturts might have some insight as to how many more feet of right-of-way it takes to develop and maintain a 10-foot multimodal pathway. When the final drawing would be done, you'd be able to determine if that additional 10-foot multimodal pathway actually required an additional doorstep or rooftop to develop.
Even coming close to homes, sometimes that might be a decision. I don't see how that would necessarily.
So this is that section in the middle for the East-West Connector. You can see it's in blue. It's currently, this area is under study based upon the alignment of what they call the South Extension Turnpike, the SET. The, the way it was drawn initially goes through some of the Bureau of Reclamation land, and they can't go through that Bureau of Reclamation land. So they're currently looking at where the best relocation of that is, moving it west. And that's, so that's under study now. So once that's done, the set of plans would start, be under construction or under design also, getting that started. You can see here, Councilmember, you'd asked about Indian Hills. It actually continues. It's actually north of the turnpike, and it would continue. And I don't think that they'd be taking that out of service in any way because it actually dives a little bit south of it. So Indian Hills would be maintained.
So they're only replacing Indian Hills from 48 to 48?
Correct. Well, 60th, 60th to 48th, to be technically correct.
Right. They're not replacing Indian Hills between 48 and 60th on either side?
Well, it starts at 60th on the west side and goes to 48th on the east side. It'll just depend, they're not, if they impact it. I'm sure that if they do damage it, they're going to repair that. But at this point, I, you know, again, we don't have plans for us to refer to. I'm just going off what I can see here. It's south of Indian Hills, and so I don't know. And at one point, it actually gets, I don't know what, tenth of a mile away from it. So I don't know if they'd be replacing it that far out based upon this drawing that I'm looking at right now. But again, this is a line sketch, not design plans. So to kind of share some timelines here.
This question formulated while we were on this slide. How long does it take for environmental studies to get done? I was seeing that they're underway when the design starts.
That, that's, it depends. That's not a question that has an answer. When we do a NEPA study, which is maybe a little bit more detailed than this because it involves some other items that aren't included in this, those we typically figure take about a year. But that, part of that is the signatory period at the end in review by Department of Transportation. So, you know, they can take anywhere from a month to nine months. It really depends on the complexity and what they're looking at and what the details are. You know, when you're breaking it up in pieces like this, if you look at that first phase, the first phase may not have nearly as many environmental concerns as the second phase, and so the second phase takes longer. There's just more field work involved. There's more environmental regulations they have to look into. So there's a lot of things that vary to give you a timeline on it. So to give a, a timeline, I would say anywhere from three months to nine months.
And it's got a, are it's OTA? Do they have to pass like NEPA standards?
They do where they intersect the federal highway system. And I don't, I don't know exactly what the radius is from that or what the distance away from that is, but that's something that we could certainly follow up on and ask.
So it won't be the whole, what we're talking about right now with that little section, that messy interchange, if I'm remembering correctly?
That would go through a full NEPA.
Okay.
Is that federal land?
The interstate is, yes. The interstate system is, is.
Interchange of Indian Hills and 36th? All right.
Thank you.
But the rest of it's not going to, doesn't have to be studied for its environmental impact?
No, they are doing studies now. Studies underway, shown here for water bodies, wetlands, threatened endangered species, and cultural resources, which is historic and archaeological. Those four items are the bulk and almost the complete look at a NEPA study.
Because it can be a Clean Water Act, a study under Clean Water Act.
Absolutely.
Or NEPA Act or something else. It depends on what act you're talking about.
Right. And, and if you start impacting wetlands or waterways, you're getting to the Corps of Engineers, and you've got to do EPA. So there's a lot of things that vary on, on what, what rules and regulations you have to get into.
Who's going to be reviewing the studies?
I, I did a follow-up with that question. I didn't ask that question. We were told they'd be made available to us. I do know as far as the water bodies and wetlands, they committed to work with COMCD, which they, they can bring in federal stipulations on stuff that they review. And they will be very concerned with water quality at Lake Thunderbird and through the watershed. So, you know, I know they'll be reviewing it also. But as far as who will be responsible for review, I'd have to, I can ask that question and get you an answer for that.
Mine was based kind of what you were coming on. Do we know if this East-West Connector crosses a blue line creek or tributary?
Yes.
Are they requiring a higher level of study for those areas? Okay, that's just above.
Yeah, because they'll be looking at, at that point, they'll be looking at floodplain. They'll be looking at, at 404 permitting, which is Waters of the US. Yes, anywhere they're crossing, anything like that, they will have a higher, that, that'll be part of the study, and that's what the water bodies and wetlands will be.
Okay.
They'll have to be doing wetland determinations. To do a proper wetland determination, you pretty much need a botanist and a soil expert out there to really get it done properly. So they'll be bringing in, and I, they've already got those contracted and those are underway.
That's been my understanding as well. Anytime you do a 404 permit, it's usually a 12- to 18-month process, and it's very, very adept.
If you have to do an individual permit, that's absolutely correct. For transportation, there's a, there's a threshold limit that if you don't go over, you can actually get a nationwide permit. And that's what we do a lot here in Norman, like with our bridge, bridge projects. We can get a nationwide 404 permit. It just requires us to say, hey, we're going to be working in this area, but we're below this threshold. And that is so that they're not inundated with small projects. They can concentrate on the larger projects. However, when you start looking at Emhoff Creek, I think we've been working on that one for like 18 months.
Yes.
So an individual permit, and they can get very sticky. When we did the individual permit for Main Street, we had to do a lot more mitigation for the, for the trees that were lost. We had to do a three-to-one or four-to-one replacement, and we had to monitor that for 10 years, turning in tree surveys. So there's a lot that goes into, especially when you get to a 404 individual permit. And along with the 404 permit, you also have to get a 401 permit, which is a water quality permit.
Right.
So a lot goes into it. At a certain point, it starts getting very, very broad and a lot of, actually, the other way. It gets very detailed and very narrow, not very broad. Wrong direction there, I apologize. But there's a lot of effort that would go into any of those sensitive watersheds.
Well, in this context, you know, I'm, this is the one time I'm grateful for burdensome regulations. Yeah, the more, the better.
We are fortunate that Mr. Mattingly and his team and their cooperation with COMCD, we've got folks with knowledge, experience, and expertise who, you know, spend their free time making sure the water quality in Lake Thunderbird is not negatively impacted. So we'll have lots of eyeballs, independent of who OTA may forward those documents to. I can assure you that our staff and COMCD will review them in detail.
Scott, one other thing that was in there. You said they had contracted those out, so that's a third-party test lab, right?
Or third-party consultant, yes. They would, yeah. It's difficult to do. I'm assuming they have, I'm 99% sure they have. But they, they're just too large, and you have to have very specialized staff for steady corridors of this length. When you start looking at, you know, threatened endangered species, that's a whole different realm, and you have to have, you know, biologists. There's just a lot that goes into these when you really, especially for this level and for, for this level of, of, you know, project. project, there's a lot that goes into it and the, just the number of people involved can get very large. I was involved in one for spring in Hawaii and we had forty or fifty people working on it from here as well as people in the field in Hawaii, so they can get very wide and very large.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so to kind of go back to the current guidelines, fall of twenty twenty-four, they're expecting their sixty percent plans to be completed, so then probably the next forty-five to sixty days. So and, and why that date is important, and this is what we're hearing from neighboring agencies who have experienced turnpike development right through the middle of town. When the plans are finalized at sixty percent, we won't have an opportunity to say, we need you to include X. After sixty percent design drawings, any additions we come up with, we pay for. So that's really kind of why we're here tonight is we want to make sure that sixty percent design set of plans doesn't go forward without your fingerprints on it or anything we request after that, we pay for. Correct. And that includes, for example, if we weren't in the agreement, the frontage roads weren't put into the project, they wouldn't purchase the right-of-way to account for that, so we'd have to come back, if we decide we need frontage roads, we'd have to purchase the right-of-way, do the design, do the construction. Same with the multimodal pathway, if that ten-foot multimodal pathway east to west is important, you need to make sure that request is in prior to sixty percent. Or we'll build those on our own at some future date, if.
At our, at our costs and our taxpayer dollars, not theirs.
Correct. So that's the sixty percent, we were told that sixty percent would be included in reviews, we start getting in there learning more of some of the details that are being requested tonight that frankly, I just don't have answers for because I haven't seen that detail yet. And then late, or mid twenty twenty-five, we should see final plans on that first phase, seeing construction beginning potentially late twenty twenty-five. With twenty twenty-seven, by the end of twenty-seven, have the main line open to traffic, what that means is the actual turnpike lanes. There still may be some work on the frontage roads or some interchange items, but that actual connector would be open to traffic. And I, my comment there about no permits are required from Norman, I just found out that that is incorrect. They will be acquiring stormwater permits, so we will be issuing stormwater permits and then there'll be discussion about floodplain permits also. So, you know, if they meet all those requirements, they, those would be approvable items.
Yes, sir. What would happen if the city of Norman said no, we're not going to issue those permits?
So just like any permit, you've got a, an appeal process. I'd have to look at what happens with a stormwater permit, I can't remember that off the top of my head, but I can tell, talk about the floodplain permit goes to B O A, B O A Board of Adjustment, they can overturn that, if they don't, you can go District Court and they can overturn it at that point. It's a permit. Basically, if they met all the requirements of a floodplain permit and we denied it, it'd be pretty short, yeah, it'd be a pretty short ruling by a judge on that. We, with the floodplain permit, I am the floodplain administrator. So, you know, that goes through the committee, we do have two citizen committee members on there, we give them full information and sit down with them if they need more. But if they met all the requirements, there'd really be no basis for denial.
And those requirements mean they have to show that they're.
No rise, so.
Not to make the problem worse?
Correct, so kind of your, your main basis there is zero rise, so you're not gonna, or very little, it's just minimal. That you're not gonna, so you're not gonna impact any upstream or downstream property owners and you're not gonna raise the flood level at all. So that, that's the, to break it down to simplest form, that's, that's your main requirement that we're protecting.
Does it address runoff?
A floodplain permit does not.
So runoff pollution from this turnpike?
So they would have a stormwater permit, they would get that through utility department and they would have a permit just like any developer or contractor out there that's doing a construction project. So we would be doing our, however often our, I know they, they're pretty good at getting out there a couple times a month, I think, or they would try to. We'd probably put extra eyes on this one, in addition.
Michelle Lautenback and.
Yeah, Michelle Lautenback and her team. And then in addition, they told us that they do have a third party that totally runs their stormwater programs during construction, they take it pretty seriously. And talking to some other communities, we haven't heard they had a lot of concerns with that, but that is something that we definitely want to keep on top of. As far as we're concerned, we wouldn't be doing inspection of this necessarily, but we would treat it like any other project, just like we do when ODOT is building projects like James Garner for Norman. We're on it, we're checking it, we're, we're taking care of it, we're the liaison with our community. So we would treat this the same, it would just be another developer in our, you know, in our, in our city that we'd be out there watching and trying to keep tabs on and help.
Not as concerned about it causing more flooding, even though that is a concern. Anytime there's a new bridge or a culvert or anything constructed, is there gonna be an unintended or unforeseen impact negatively on an upstream or downstream property? But the runoff pollution from this has been my primary concern since the moment I saw it really was if the lake is an impaired body of water and the Little River is the primary tributary into it and we know that runoff pollution from urban areas of Norman, Moore and South Oklahoma City is the cause of that pollution. How is a new highway with whatever debris may fall on it, whether it be trash or fluids from vehicles or butt-blown-out tires or whatever it may be and that is washed off the highway into the Little River, into the lake? And so that's been my main concern this whole time really about it is, how is this going to improve? How, how could it improve the situation and not make it worse?
We totally.
By the mere fact of its existence?
We totally agree with you on everything you just said. There's obviously concern about during construction, about increased sediment loading coming into our, our streams and impacting Lake Thunderbird, we absolutely cannot have that, we don't want that on any project. This to me is no different than having a new subdivision built or us building a new roadway on, up here for James Garner, it's just another develop, I mean, in that sense to me, it's just another development. And we've got to make sure that all those protocols are in place, that they have proper best management practices in place, it's being inspected properly. Like I said, we've heard that they do, they're doing a good job with this on other turnpike sections, but them having a third party that's watching it, it's not gonna be an in-house and then us watching it in addition, that lessens the risk, I'm not gonna tell you it goes away because if there's a four-inch rainstorm, we're kind of at the mercy of mother nature. But, you know, that, that would be our main thing and also, you know, getting things stabilized quickly, all those things. We totally agree, as, as staff, we're all on board with that, we want to make sure our water quality is protected during construction. Post-construction, that's why we're pushing for green infrastructure, green infrastructure will help remove all those contaminants and help give us a chance to get it treated before it gets into our water system. Buffer zones, wetlands, bioswales, retention, there's just so many different things that we can utilize to help us with that that are proven science to remove solids, remove trash, remove the, the fluids, the hydrocarbons, the phosphorus, the nitrogen, the total suspended solids. So that's why we, we as staff, if, if this turnpike's gonna happen, we want to be at the table so we can have a word in this and we can be a part of the team and reporting back to you as council and our citizens, instead of having this just happen and us not have any, any real conversations about it. And that's my main concern at this point.
Sure, I appreciate that and the, so they would have to do certain mitigation. Green infrastructure anyway, we're asking them to do more than what they would.
So they will have to do wetland mitigation, if they impact a wetland, they'll have to mitigate it.
And we're asking them to do more than.
We're asking if we can see some other things included that would help reduce, yes. And specifically as it relates to, you know, this concept that, that I'd heard for the first time that come out of our AIM Steering Committee. There are project opportunities on a scale this big where there is a mitigation bank and mitigation credits may exist and developers could buy their way out of mitigation physical infrastructure by paying a fee into a bank and then somebody else goes and competes for those dollars in the bank to actually do the work. That was not our request, our request was, we believe there are design consultants who have already had eyes on the Little River who actually understand wetland design, construction, what that looks like ten years from now and twenty years from now. And our request was to have them available to plug in with your civil engineers doing just, you know, road design work. Because I, I think they would tell you most of their design engineers are really good about drawing lines where pavement's gonna be, but yeah, getting into the wetlands is probably a specialty that they're not maintaining. But to have a seat at the table with design consultants for wetlands that council trusts, that's our request. We think the physical investment in those mitigation measures inside our city limits is worth a lot more to water quality than paying a fee into a mitigation bank. And, and a lot of these mitigation efforts are things that I think that we're gonna be considering anyways as part of our, like Thunderbird TMDL, as we try to look at ways to clean it up. Wetlands have been mentioned a lot in that also. I will say that kind of, so on Highway Nine in the last phase they did, there was an area where they wound up kind of widening Day Blue Creek. And we really kind, it was, it was the, ODOT, it was not OTA. And they kind of did a little more than what we thought should have been done, we worked with them and a little wetlands has kind of developed itself in that area, where we actually have stations up, down, upstream and downstream, we're actually seeing that the water downstream has actually got a higher water quality than that upstream. So we can see in our environment that small systems can make an impact.
I know we're really early on in discussion, but for Phase One, is there kind of a estimate on what the cost of wetlands and the multimodal path, the frontage roads, is that like in the millions for this project and has OTA indicated what's too much, like they won't pay above five million in extra improvements?
I, I can tell you in our conversation with them, everything that we mentioned today, we may be asking for a little more on some extra wetland or extra green infrastructure, but they were totally on board with the items that we discussed and said that they would absolutely consider that in the plans. And your honor, those are projects in the millions. And in a wetlands project conversation, we had many, many millions, thirty-plus. And in a five billion dollar program, that's a little piece. And if it's coming off our water budget, it's a big giant piece, so.
When we get further down the way with this like fall, will we kind of have like a cost estimate for the things we're asking for, just?
We, we can ask if they can break some of those costs out for us or we can take a look at it and kind of take a shot with what we know. These are things that we do in the Public Works Department quite frequently. But this is, you can tell this is since July fifteenth, we're coming to you quickly here. We can certainly come back with more information at a later date, we're happy to track down any information that you'd like for us to try to track down.
Yeah, well, we, I'd like, I'd be curious to get follow-up on the environmental part. What, if any, cost savings we're getting out of this by getting ahead of it? Those are just off the top of my mind, I'm also curious about that interchange we saw and, yeah, like what, I don't know if it's for this particular discussion, but like what could you develop in that area that actually made sense, so?
I think for us to bring alternatives, options, what does it mean if only the north-south frontage roads stay connected or what does it mean if only east? So I, I think all those alternatives, you can kind of walk your way through when it's all on the computer and, you know, and, and you can change some of the programs to see what that model looks like. And, and happy to carry that ball and it just may boil down to what are your preferences in terms of that ultimate design?
One of the things about that stacking is a safe space, if you didn't stack them, you'd go out and that's more homes getting torn up in more Norman, so. It's ugly in itself, but it works.
Yes, sir.
First, I just want to thank Kirk with some of my fellow counselors as far as the waterfall. I mean, because we've got all, a lot of emails about that. It's, it's a huge concern, but that's why I sit down with you, I sit down with Mr. Mattingly, I sit down with Mr. Murphy. And I, I think our consensus was, the more that we work with them, the more involved we are, the more we can mitigate any kind of initial pollution, any kind of initial runoff, because you, you brought up the Highway Nine. When we widened it, when we widened it, it is true that there was some excess runoff going into the lake, it was mainly phosphorus. But that is something that we were able to deal with and if we would have worked with them early on, it's something that we probably could have mitigated altogether. And like you brought up, now that we've actually worked with them and created those wetlands, the water, water quality is better than it's ever been. It, it's, I don't know how much better, but it's better, it's better for the lake, it's better drinking water for the people. So the more we're involved, the more we work together. And overall, am I a fan of the turnpike? Do I want to see anybody lose their homes? Do I like eminent domain? No, I do not, I hate it, I hate it, I hate it. But if, if this is something that we're not gonna be able to do anything about, it's something that's gonna come through regardless. We need to do everything in our power to make sure it's done right and I just applaud what you're doing, so I appreciate it.
Prior to getting started, Chris, when we were talking about an impaired lake, are we talking about filtration or are we talking about pollution?
Well, they're both actually, dissolved oxygen.
Okay.
Chlorophyll A is over its numbers, which is probably due to phosphorus, nitrogen and then turbidity, too much silt coming in.
Thank you, sir. So yes, it's all of those items, that's what the, the Lake Thunderbird TMDL addresses with the phosphorus nitrogen, total suspended solids, basically to get down the chlorophyll A and also to reduce the turbidity in the lake.
Yes, sir.
So I think this has been asked, but when are the environmental studies gonna be completed?
I, I did not get a date, we can follow up with them and, and we'll get those and we'll certainly move forward. I just didn't ask the date on completion on those.
Well, they're working on the plans without knowing the impact on the environment.
Well, at sixty percent plans, typically, that's, that's like the sixty to ninety jump is where you actually start doing that. So at this point, they're determining what the design is, they've got to have a rough design, like a sixty percent, to even know what is being impacted. So it's kind of a chicken and an egg and kind of a iterative approach. But you can't go out there and say, we're gonna disturb this much of a creek until you know what the design is going over the creek. You don't know how much wetlands until you know what you're designing to go over that wetlands and then you work, then you work through that and you see what you can do to mitigate or reduce. So really, you've got to have a certain level of design, I mean, for example, our NEPA process with, with ODOT, they won't even begin it until we turn in sixty percent plans because they have to have that level of plans to even be able to begin to assess what the impact is to the environment.
When do they start doing the environmental studies?
I, I, I'm sorry, I did not ask that question. There's a lot of discussion going on and I didn't get that detailed on the dates of those. But we will certainly ask that information.
Those things can take a year or more, if they just started them yesterday. And they plan to begin construction before they're completed?
They, they won't begin construction, they can't begin construction before they're completed because if they have to get a four oh four permit or they have to get a water quality permit or they have wetland mitigation, they could not begin that until that's all in place. And I guess you can start other sections, but if you don't know what's gonna happen in that section, you don't really want to start investing in, in, in that and you may have to make changes to your plans, which is costly. So typically, no one will start until the environmental process is complete so they can make sure that they're building the right, right thing at the right place. And the bridge span over the Canadian River, being the biggest bridge in Oklahoma, they'll spend a lot of time making sure they get that right and all the environmental documents are done long before they go out and try to poke a hole in the river bottom for pilings.
So for my own curiosity, let's just assume worst-case scenario, we get an environmental disaster, something that we are not able to remedy in-house with our own budget. What, what are our, our options at that point? I mean, is that grounds for a lawsuit? Would we, would we pull Detroit and declare bankruptcy? Would we? Just kind of really trying to game plan out, if there was something that, that were to happen that we weren't able to handle ourselves, are we protected?
And I'll look at Mr. Knighton in the back. In, in a, in a project of this magnitude, the recognition that, you know, they're looking at a budget of about five billion dollars and if such a, an event were attributed to that project, at least we know the resources are there to actually mitigate and, and, and clean that up, whatever that looks like. In terms of a process, Mr. Knighton, I don't, I don't know if such a scenario has presented itself, but I would value his opinion.
I can't think of one, but I would really be more interested in specifically what type of a disaster are you referring? I can't think of one, but I would really be more interested in specifically what type of a disaster are you referring to?
We lose access to Lake Thunderbird as our drinking supply.
Well, there's, people have mentioned there's some provisions in Title 11 that do give a municipality the option or the right to bring a legal action against an entity that pollutes the water supply. I believe that's 37, that's one of the provisions in Title 37. If it's 115, 116 specifically provides for the award of damages to the municipality with regard to or against an entity that pollutes a water supply. So if something along those lines were to happen, where there's facts or evidence that we could show someone polluted our water supply, we would be suing them and requesting whatever damages that we thought were appropriate to remedy, whatever the damage was.
I appreciate that. That's exactly the answer I was looking for.
It'd be part of that too, because that's Midwest City and Dell City would be in on the same pot.
Right, would that rise to a level of class action? I guess not, it's probably it's a little different than.
It'll be bigger than that.
Okay, no, I think that, I think that answered my question. Appreciate that.
So would the damages be fair to estimate if we lost the use of Thunderbird as our source of drinking water?
That would be a significant amount of damages. I don't have any way to be able to predict what that is. There really aren't any cases that I was able to locate where that was an issue. But obviously, the issue for us would be whatever the full amount of our damages were, that's what we would be seeking. And if, whatever that number is, that's what the statute gives us a right to do after.
And we do have sampling stations along the Little River, so we could be watching water quality. If we see a significant change, we can approach it at that point before it becomes a catastrophic event.
And just those things that we lose sleep on overnight, what that immediate response might look like, might look like technology being delivered to the headworks up by COMCD, where filtration and media for whatever those specific contaminants are, we might be able to capture them at the headworks before they make it into our collection system before they go to the water treatment plant. And I agree with Dell City and Midwest City would be very much interested in the same types of mitigation. And there are some fascinating technologies available that would show up in the back of, you know, some big rigs and trailers and plug and play while long-term mitigation, that gets worked out. And I'm just, I feel fortunate, I sleep well knowing that Mr. Mattingly and his team understand these issues and our water quality needs. We also have some alternatives, some additional capacity potentially through Oklahoma City to help supplement anything we might lose during some mitigation measure.
Appreciate that, yeah. Any opportunity that we can drill and provide some monitoring wells, it's all the better. The more, the more sampling, more data points we have, I think the better.
There was a group out of Otoka that was trying to sell water from Otoka to Oklahoma City. And asked us if we wanted to tap on that. Interesting, didn't, you were just an idea. Yes, sir.
So if we're wrong, if they're wrong with their studies, whether the studies are inadequate, if they don't, or if they're just flat out wrong, we'd have to sue them to get the damages. And realistically, do we think that we would win that lawsuit?
I can't answer that. I don't do lawsuits, but I think that before we saw anything, I think that with our monitoring that we currently have going to Lake Thunderbird, we would see any change in water quality early. And I think we wouldn't wait until it got to a damages point. We'd go to OTA at that point, say, hey, we're seeing some issues or concerns. And we try to work them out well before we got to a catastrophic event. So I don't see, I don't know that there would be a situation where we get to a point where we're suing a state agency. I think that we try to address it earlier. Like I said, because of the TMDL, we do have the luxury of having seven years of testing background already. We know where we're at, we know what we've got, we know the fluctuations, we can monitor that. So we could, we could keep an eye on that. And if we, like I said, if we saw, started seeing changes, we would try to work the turnpike with the OTA at that point. Not wait until we saw a more significant problem. We try to address it early on.
So we monitored Lake Thunderbird now and all the streams going into it. Where are the monitoring points on the streams? Are they before and after the, any major roads? Do we have ones there for Day Blue Creek before it crosses Highway nine and after?
Yes, and we do have them, we have them at the city limits coming into more on the Little River. We have them, I mean, Jason, I'm sorry, how many sampling stations are there?
We currently have nine permanent stations and a few that are floating. We do some additional monitoring. We're installing one on the Little River at 60th and Franklin later this fall as well. So we'll have both the Little River as it comes into the city limits of basically I-35 and Indian Hills. And we'll have one at 60th and Franklin. And that is stage or how much water. And we're also doing water quality as it relates to nitrogen, phosphorus, total dissolved solids, pH conductivity, all those other normal water quality parameters.
Have there been any municipalities that have challenged the OTA on the effects on their water?
Not that I could find.
And I mean, right now, the turnpike goes as close as it's going to be here to Lake Arcadia, Overholser and Lake Heffner. And there's probably more up in the Tolsary that I'm just not aware of, but.
Which rivers is those?
The Kilpatrick goes along Overholser and, and don't quote me on this, but I think it's, it's the Kilpatrick goes across Overholser and Heffner. And then the turnpike is very close to the Lake Arcadia.
And so there's active monitoring there that has been able to determine that there's been no impact?
I do not know if there's active monitoring on those lakes.
So we, so none of these municipalities have tested to see if there's an effect on their water?
We don't know that.
So if, if they were to have an impact on our water, and if we were to launch some kind of lawsuit, what's going to, how are we going to be able to argue that it wasn't just increase in population?
Well, I think that because of the monitoring, because the monitoring is done throughout the year. It's not just once a year or, you know, every two years. You'd be able to watch as population growth grows along with the turnpike. And you'd be able to watch those, you could just, and you know, there's some stations I think are going to be close enough to the turnpike that because of being along our northern border, that necessarily wouldn't be impacted by development unless we started seeing the large development coming in. So it would just be a matter of like any data collection that you have to look at it, analyze it and make those type of decisions as you look at it.
Is the city staff going to be analyzing those and watching for any kind of increase?
We, we monitor those continually. We, we may not study them, but we do look at them and we can tell you when we see something change. And we would continue to do that and we could increase that and look at it more in depth on those gauging stations that would be more directly impacted by the turnpike. And I think that's what makes us very unique to the other municipalities of Oklahoma City and Edmund that utilize the water from those other water sources, is that they're not monitoring those. But again, I haven't heard anything out of them that says that they've had any changes in their water treatment or any changes. So we'll be able to monitor and when we see a problem, we'll be able to address it quickly.
If they're not measuring it, then the only way they know is by cancer.
Well, we, we buy up to 5 million gallons of water a day from the Oklahoma City Water Supply. And I think that gets tested before it goes into our distribution center. Is that correct, Mr. Mattingly? So we would know if anything showed up in water deliveries from Oklahoma City that come from those bodies of water.
And they're doing large amounts of testing on the water itself at the treatment plant that it's seeing increases.
How many outstanding DEQ violations does a turnpike authority have?
I haven't researched that, sir. I'm sorry, we can look into that.
That would kind of give an indicator on how committed they are to filtering and cleaning out the water supplies of the municipalities they destroy when they go through them.
We can certainly see if there are any out there and report that back.
Okay, thank you for that.
Is the testing that we have in place now, will it be sufficient for what is predicted to come? Or will we have to implement more testing sites along the way or what does that look like?
We need to really sit down and look at where those testing locations are with respect to the proposed turnpike system. And then we can make those decisions. It's been a long time since I've dealt with that, so I haven't actually looked at that directly in a few years. We could definitely look at that and that's something we could even consider for, for future requests. Say we'd like four more, four more data stations that we could get so we could have more direct results.
Is that something we'll have to approve as a council?
I'll look back at Jason and ask about the process we went through to identify that site for the one you will be installing in the near future.
The sites that we currently monitor were ones that were called out in the TMDL and then the monitoring plan that the city of Norman presented to DEQ and was approved. To kind of answer your question too, we also report annually to DEQ all of our testing results. So they are monitoring all of those water quality data as well. As far as adding new sites, the city of Norman can add sites. We have a minimum that we have to maintain because of our TMDL monitoring plan. We can add as many sites as we want, it's a matter of money. And then at a certain point, what resolution do you want and is it a good use of money? So the reason we're moving the one that we did is we had one site that was honestly, it was dry 99% of the time. It was one tiny little trib up in the arm. And we moved it because after six, seven years, it's just dry. And we decided more monitoring on the Little River was actually more important to us, so.
So if this is an expense that we have to occur as we advance, is that something that we could ask OTA to include in upfront?
Absolutely.
And also, is there any mechanism that we have for this type of infrastructure improvement that we could put into stormwater permits or the floodplain permits that we do have some control over as it pertains to projects this size?
When ODOT, when ODOT does a Highway nine widening, Mr. Sturts, what does that look like in terms of our stormwater permitting?
They usually just come in and request a permit and we review it. So they have to supply erosion control plans. That shows us where they're going to put those best management practices. Silt fence, not my favorite, but it's what everybody sees and understands where they're going to put in check dams to help slow down water flow. And also, then they also have to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan or SWP three. And that document states when they're going to be doing their, all the details of it interior. And then also, it goes into a lot of detail about what the BMPs are, maintenance of them. And then the four, the permit is actually attached to that. Those are living documents throughout a project. So at any time, if an inspector shows up, they should see up there that we disturbed this area, we're working over here, we included this. We took that out because it's complete and it's an active, ongoing document. So there's a lot of detail that goes into that. And so that would be our main control. We look at that and we make sure that meets all the minimum criteria of the state and the city. So, because we are an MS four program, so we are required. So we do permitting of anything over than one acre. So that would be over an acre, so we would be doing that permit allowance on that. And then as far as the floodplain permitting goes, we're only looking at that section that's being disturbed of the floodplain itself. So when you're looking, let's say the floodplain's 100 foot wide and they're going to disturb 400 feet of it, that's all we're looking at. We don't start going outside of that and we make sure they're meeting all the regulations, both FEMA and of our own floodplain ordinance. And if it doesn't meet it, we typically won't even take it to committee, so, but it won't get approved.
So Councilmember Hinkle, I think in that line of thought, in the resolution requesting these things to indicate that we would like to request some additional monitoring wells and between Mr. Sturts, Mr. Mattingly, Jason's team, we could identify where we think we would really get benefit from being able to test water before it gets to the construction zone and coming off of the construction zone where we can gather that data. But yeah, in the grand scheme of a project of this magnitude, the cost of those monitoring wells to request beyond budget dust.
So a line of thinking, I want to take that a little one step further. Instead of asking them to fund and build them, I would like to build them ourselves so we can start getting our baseline today and then ask them to recoup the cost. Because I don't, I, monitoring wells down the road after this thing is constructed is great. But if we don't know what our baseline is, we don't know if we've exceeded, if we've improved, if we've done anything. So I think for our own peace of mind, setting some baseline, whether it's one per mile along the East-West connector, I'll let you guys use your job.
And what we're talking about are monitoring stations. So these are stream stations, not monitoring wells, doing groundwater. This is surface water is really what we're looking at. Because that surface water is what's going to be infiltrating anyways to get down into the, to the. But yeah, happy to include that intervention.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
All right, so in this hypothetical future where they've constructed a turnpike and we're actively monitoring all parts of the streams, upstream, downstream, we're catching everything so we can see exactly what their impact is. We see, even if they don't impact our lake to push it over the edge where we can't use it for water on day one. But there is a measurable increase in pollution. And Title 11, no person from partnership or corporation or any of the partners, officers, managers or employees thereof shall pollute or permit the pollution of the water supply of municipality or any stream on lake or other water reservoir or groundwater aquifer. So would we then lose our ability to, would, would an argument be able to be made? And this is probably a question for Mr. Knighton. If we see that measurable increase, as we do have grounds to sue them for damages, could they argue that we permitted the pollution of that water?
Well, I guess what I would be asking first has to do with causation. And the question or the evidence that I would need to look at or try to develop on the front end of it is, what's the cause of the pollution?
And so if we can't determine that, then we're not protected?
You're not protected if you can't determine causation regardless of the circumstances. I mean, that, if we're the plaintiff, you have the burden to prove that it's more likely than not that the defendant committed some act that resulted in damages. So you'd still have to prove causation regardless of what the source was. That would be your, our obligation to prove. So that's why on the front end of that question, I would be looking for what's the cause? What caused the pollution? That's something what we're talking about, monitoring and things along those lines. That type of evidence would help you develop what the actual cause was. But in terms of the question of we permitted, my understanding is OTA has the ability to build a turnpike. It doesn't matter whether we say, yes, you can or no, you can't. So it would be difficult for the defendant to argue that the city of Norman caused this because we let you build this turnpike. You have a right to do that. What we would be looking at is what's the cause of the pollution? And if the cause of the pollution or something that we could tie to OTA, that's who your defendant would be. And that's who you would be looking for to pay whatever damages you could prove.
But again, our goal is let's work upfront, let's get some measures in place so that we're not talking about that in the future. Let's get in front of it instead of behind it. And the only way to do that is to be working with them.
So this vast sensor array that we've got, let's assume that it does establish that a causation. Then we can sue them for the damages of the water that's polluted?
You could sue them for whatever damages you could prove. I mean, you would be looking at the cost of replacement, cost of, cost of remediating whatever the problem is. You know, not necessarily knowing specifically what would be in the water or how you would remove it. You would be talking about those types of costs as your damages. So yeah, we would be, you would be suing them and you would be looking to recover whatever the cost of remedying whatever the problem that that entity caused is.
Okay, so now this council lives in reality. We know how likely it is that we're going to launch that kind of complicated lawsuit against the turnpike authority if they do have a measurable increase, which the staff will tell us about in pollution to our water supply. Even a measurable increase that's, as our population grows and we contribute our own pollution to it, eventually it could hit a tipping point if we don't have any better ways to mitigate that. If they're giving it a bump ahead, well, then we're losing the use of it earlier. But still, the point remains that what's the, what are the chances that we're actually going to launch this, this lawsuit if this were to happen? 100%.
But in this.
If they screw up, we will sue them. But we cannot sue somebody because we think they're going to do something wrong. Me and Mr. Knighton had this conversation.
Me and Mr. Knighton had this conversation, he sent it to me in email. If the city attempts to prohibit OTA from construction of this turnpike, we will get sued. If the city gets sued, its argument under Oklahoma Statute thirty-seven, one fifteen would be similar to the plaintiff's argument, Pikeoff OTA, OTA will violate some duty or legal obligation at some point in the future. This argument was rejected in Pikeoff OTA and without actual evidence and the adverse impact on Lake Thunderbird would be rejected in future litigation. A couple of months ago, we decided to go against his, the city attorney's advice, we decided to hold election against our city charter, and now our taxpayers had to pay three thousand dollars because we refused to listen. And now if we refuse to listen again, we're, we're going to be the ones expected to pay in losing court, and our taxpayers are going to lose that again. So that's where I'm at on it.
So, are we going to be able to launch a lawsuit? Do you really honestly think that we're going to be able to direct Mr. Knighton to sue the, the OTA because one of us has been informed by staff on their own will that there's been an increase in pollution and that they know that it was from the turnpike?
My kid turns the water faucet on and oil comes out, you damn right the city will sue and you damn right we will win.
Okay, but if it's less than oil?
If it's a contaminant that jeopardizes the health of our citizens, we can sue and we will win, because then we have an actual reason to sue. We can't sue somebody because they might do something.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that we wouldn't have the, a reasonable basis to form a lawsuit. That's, do you think that this council will actually launch a lawsuit against the turnpike authority? If there was a, even if there was a small increase?
Well, it depends on the definition of small. If it goes over a limit, what he's doing is he's testing two limits that are in the wa, in the clean water.
Okay, small being?
Three or three D list is what, is what is the impaired water bodies list.
So it can, it can move up and down. Say, say we salt the road, we, we go out, it's icy, we salt the road, and, and something moves up and down, whatever the pH moves up and down or something like that, that wouldn't be enough if it goes over a limit and it wasn't a spike, darn tootin'.
So, we have noisy measurements just by the natural cycle of the city and rain, and so how easily will it be to identify and determine that it was the turnpike that caused the pollution?
That's a more difficult question, depends on what parameters you're looking at, because if you're, to your mayor's point, if it's something like salinity, again, that can vary so much, just how wet is it, how dry is it, have we salted the roads, et cetera. With respect to any of the things that we're concerned existing in the TMDL related to water quality, we have such a large data set that it's, we have monthly data, data for seven to eight years, it gets real easy to see. We have baseline data because we collect like just base flow, we also collect that high flow data, so we can see what those numbers are doing. On top of, I know the Water Resources Board has an ambient trend monitoring network that they've been running since the mid nineties, including Lake Thunderbird, and there's been countless number of studies on Thunderbird, like there is a massive data set available on Thunderbird that we can see these things happening. Now, there's always things that could happen on top of that, but to your point too about what is the chances we could sue and things like that, the reason that the TMDL was even implemented on Lake Thunderbird was because COMCD sued because they saw declining water quality, and that prompted DEQ to start, to start the entire TMDL process that led us to having to do more monitoring and implement these things to start trying to improve water quality in the watershed. So it has happened.
How much of an increase was that?
Whenever they sued, I honestly don't know the answer to that. I do know that the decrease for the TMDL is a thirty percent, give or take, depending on what exact parameter.
What's the standard deviation of these measurements that we would be comparing the pollution to?
That varies by parameter, because it, your detection limits vary dramatically depending on what parameter you're talking about.
And so our argument, our argument in court would come down to a probability of this measurement being higher.
I can't begin to give you legal advice on how that would work.
So, so now.
I can speculate, but I, I'm not going to do you any good there.
So now my question is back to, how are we going to identify that pollution has increased on, by the turnpike? And if we can't measure this, we can't identify that.
The one thing we are certain of at this point is that turnpike is going to be built, and all those conversations and data points, we can either participate with them to get out data that you seek or not, and if we do not participate, they won't be required to develop additional monitoring stations, et cetera. Those will come at our request, including things like frontage roads. For the turnpike to operate, they don't need frontage roads, they'd be happy to build the turnpike without frontage roads. What does that do to our future ability to move around Norman? We really need some things like that to make sure we haven't just cut off future development opportunities within the forty-eights and apply more pressure outside the forty-eights. So, the one thing that I would say is a certainty is they're going to build that infrastructure. It's, it's going to happen.
Well, this doesn't delegitimize any of my questions, but to that frontage road, Title sixty-nine dash seventeen oh six B, if the authority shall find it necessary to change the location of any portion of any state or county highway or street of a municipality, it shall cause the same to be reconstructed and substantially the same type and in as good condition as the original highway. So when they offer to build us these frontage roads, that's not really a kindness, that's a legal obligation, and to think that we're being able to get these benefits, these kindnesses by coming to the table is not only rolling over and giving in, but it's giving them cab fare too.
Well, I would say, based on that reading, and I'll look for Mr. Knighton to correct me, that would indicate if they disturbed Indian Hills as it currently exists, they would be required to replace Indian Hills. They're talking about adding two additional lanes to the other side of the turnpike that we believe ensure the opportunity to develop in between the forty-eights on the north side of the turnpike, and that's a request they can ignore and not build those frontage roads to the north side. So the property owners on the north side of the turnpike would be limited in, in ingress, egress to those development opportunities. So I agree with that statement that if they, they, they could not cause us to lose what we already have, they would have to repair and restore everything to its current condition at least, and the question is, do we want more than that? And if we want more than that, we need to make that request prior to the sixty percent design completion, or we won't get it.
Are they replacing all of the Indian Hills that'll be disturbing east of forty-eighth, northeast and west of forty-eighth, northwest?
Yeah, as that, as that map indicates, somewhere out there around forty-eighth east, when it dips down, it'll pull far enough away from Indian Hills where we don't think they'll disturb it at all.
How far away?
Again, this section isn't designed, this may not look anything like this, and, you know, because this is where they're trying to determine where the south extension turnpike will turn and go south. So until they have that, or really in this area, or this is just.
Best guess.
Yeah, so it's going to change slightly here, and once they get further along and they get that set, they'll start working on those plans and we'll, we could be involved in that.
Well, then isn't the utility of this conversation kind of limited? If we don't even know what they're building?
Well, I, I think that we are setting the general parameters. We're saying that they're agreeing that they will put the, the interchanges, the access at these locations, they're saying that they're going to get all the roads to go through, they're saying that they'll build the frontage road from sixtieth to forty-eight, they're agreeing to ten-foot multi-millail trails, we're not saying the exact design, and in this area, those number of parameters that we're discussing are much less, because at this point you don't have the frontage roads, and there's only a couple of access points on this section of Norman. So I think that, and then the, one of the, in a moment, we've got some items that we were going to include in the resolution that we could bring forward to you, but one of the items is there is that we'll redo this for the south extension turnpike, so there'd be another agreement, come back to council, and we'd set all these parameters for that, that's, that north-south. So there were kind of guaranteeing that we're going to be back, that, that we're going to be work, that they're going to reach out to us to work on that section.
I'm a little concerned with timing and AIM Norman Steering Committee. I'm curious, do they, have they seen phase one?
So, the, the Transportation Subcommittee actually has chosen to include this design in there, so they actually show this and that's all being considered as part of the transportation system, and everybody is aware of it, that everybody, my understanding is, that they basically are knowing that that, the south may move, but that that, yeah, this, this has been discussed in AIM meetings.
And this question maybe for Jane, when do we finish AIM, like when are our consultants done, when, when do we see that plan?
Well, it's still up in the air, we've got, the Steering Committee is actually asking for possibly one, maybe two more meetings to get all the information from the subcommittees forward, so, I mean, we could be looking at December possibly.
Okay, so that means just even if phase one probably won't even be completed design by then, but could change. I'm just wondering about the flexibility of the document that comes before us and what they may suggest around like an interchange that we looked at in a previous slide, but they know that that particular style is coming and will have ideas for us about what to zone in, so.
Yes, and I, I have not been to the Transportation Subcommittee meetings, but I do know that we have staff that have been there, and I do know that the consultants have talked about adding additional language in the document to acknowledge this as it comes forward and having recommendations for you as changes do come forward and the recommendations that you might be looking at.
But, but if we were to, to, to work with the OTA at this point, say this is, we all agree to this, you could take that to the AIM Committee, and they would have that and they can incorporate that now and start, we know here's the interchanges, we know the, the basic layout, except for the solar area that may shift, and they can start laying some of that out, especially, you know, basically from twenty-fourth northeast back to sixtieth. So this would be information that we could, if, if a resolution was, was passed that kind of outlined what we're saying here, that could go straight to the AIM Committee and start getting that incorporated into the document.
Okay, and then when do you think we'll be back to talk about, like, when do you think we'll get another update about this?
Well, depending on council's actions concerning a resolution, I think we would propose to update you upon completion and circulation of the sixty percent design drawings in the fall of 2024, and by that time they're relatively firm as to what it is we should anticipate being built in Norman. When it comes to that south extension turnpike, when it's in blue on the map, they haven't started, it's, it's a few years down the road, it'll be a while before that conversation reaches this level of interaction with the, with the authority, but we, we'd love to update council on sixty percent completion and then show you final design mid 2025 before any construction begins, and that will help us identify mitigation measures for, you know, traffic that we're going to address at each one of those intersections.
We could also update you on studies as they're completed also.
Would it be fair to say that that's a projection, and things are always in a projection over twenty years are going to change somewhat?
Absolutely.
They definitely have now. It's, I guarantee you, that 2025 plan has changed a lot.
And to go with.
Uh, yes, thank you.
And, and just to go with what was just said, from the AIM Committee and everything else, what are the chances we could have some small group meetings, like we do with the arena, with OTA prior to the sixty percent plan coming out?
We could certainly ask OTA how their feelings would be about that.
Because I'd, I'd love to give them my constituents, I'm about to have a town hall before too long, I would love to get their concerns, like what they would like to see, and then be able to sit down with OTA in a small group setting and discuss this, and then have the, what we can send to AIM, and what we can send to the Transportation Committee, and the more that we all work on this together now, the more we can ensure that when it happens, because Mr. Powell said, it is happening, so when this does happen, we can make sure that it happens to the very, very best of our abilities and for the best of the citizens. So yeah, if we could do some kind of small group sessions with OTA, if we could reach out to them, I would greatly appreciate it.
So, the future phase, the second part, the blue, we don't know the current alignment of it, where it might be, but we might know in early 2025, sixty percent plans will be done for the blue?
Not, not for the blue, so that's really, you've got multiple phases, you've got the, the phase between twenty-fourth northwest and twenty-fourth northeast, then you've got the blue, then you've got the yellow at the top. They're going to come in phases, and that's just kind of the start, and we're going to start seeing more plans and more production coming out, but, you know, as, as I stated, they're planning by the end of 2030 to have the main line open to traffic all the way through to I forty. So when you look at that, that's the blue, the yellow and everything. Now, I think that may be a little ambitious, we'll see, but that's, but the first that we would start seeing would probably be that next phase going, continuing, I, I don't know exactly where it's going to go to, but I've heard that it may go to Sooner or Twelfth, they keep saying Sooner, these Oklahoma City names drives me nuts, and then maybe continue on, but they're probably going to go to that line shown on here with the next section. Part of that is also dictated because there's different consultants working in different areas, so they, they don't, you know, trying to coordinate two sets of plans that haven't, you just want to cut it off where you can easily, but those are all things that we can certainly work on.
So the south part though, from this connecting interchange, south to Highway nine, doesn't exist yet, or we don't know?
They don't know the alignment, that, that's what they're doing now, they're studying what's going to be the best alignment to go south, and they didn't give us a timeframe on that, but it's not far future, it's closer to near future, but that's what they're studying now, and then they'll start beginning that design as well as the design in blue on the east-west connector.
Are they working with city staff or property owners to determine that?
I, they have not reached out to staff.
Because the problem with the initial rollout of this was that they just published a map that showed an alignment, and people then saw, oh, my property's in that alignment. I never, you know, how much did the city know about this beforehand? They never contacted me to see what I thought about this, so instead of working with the property owners, instead of working with the city, they just published a map of where it was going to go, and that certainly inflamed everyone immediately to be opposed to it, and now we have hundreds of people, property owners, who now are sitting in limbo, not knowing, they think they're safe right now because of the initial alignment that was put out, and they're just outside of it, but now they're in limbo not knowing if they might end up being inside of it, and maybe we might not even know for another year or two or longer.
Yeah, like, again, they didn't give us a timeframe, and I think that's why they do it quickly, they, they, they want to help erase that uncertainty, I think, but as far as their process for determining it, I, we can certainly mention to them that trying to work with the community may be good, but we can't enforce that.
Yeah, that's the hard part, is that want us to work together, affirm that we're working together when they've literally done nothing to work with us at all for however long they've been developing this, and then they just throw it out there, make everyone upset, people thinking they're losing their homes, their properties that they've owned, multi-generational, and now they want us to come to the table and agree to do some stuff and tell them how thankful we are for them to bring this to our town, and I've yet to still see a case made for how this is good for Norman in any way. Anybody that would love to explain that to me, how is this good for Norman? How is diverting traffic around Norman and all of our businesses on I thirty-five good for sales tax? How is developing all this rural area and having to widen every section line road to four lanes at ten million dollars a mile? How is that good for the city of Norman? If growth paid for itself, we've doubled in size since I was born, Norman would be completely solvent right now if growth just paid for itself as we're led to believe by certain people in our community. It just isn't true. Um, it just isn't true. And we end up having to do voter bonds and go into debt to try to maintain the infrastructure we have. And so, I'm just, again, apprehensive, uh, about that, the effort of working with them when it's been shown from day one that they have made no effort at all to work with us in our community, um, on this. And we're still sitting in limbo. Hundreds of our residents are sitting in limbo, not knowing what's gonna happen, and if their properties are gonna be in the way of this. And so, I, I would love to have more clarity, more certainty on what they're doing moving forward. I don't just wanna, the same thing repeated, where when they figure it out, they're gonna publish a map of a route, and then we have the same thing again. We have a bunch of people now saying, oh, my house is now in this, in the way of this. Um, so some people might be saved, but then a whole new group of people are gonna be experiencing the same thing. So, that continues to be my concern, uh, with them. And the stories we've seen and read and heard about from other communities that have, that the turnpike has come through hasn't given me a lot of hope, um, in the prospect of working with them. And, uh, you know, so, I wanna make sure that that second phase for sure. If this first phase is happening, if every legal option has been explored, and a resolution has been made in the courts that says this first part is for sure happening, the second part isn't for sure happening, as far as we know, right?
I believe the second part is happening, it's only a matter of that alignment. It is in the, um, $5 billion bond package. Every blue line, yellow line, orange line you saw has been approved by the State Supreme Court to happen, along with the funding. So, the only thing left to decide is exactly where that north-south line will be, but it has been approved by the State Supreme Court to go forward also.
Well, I do wanna make sure, again, that, um, there's no surprise about any future alignment, that they are working with the city staff. And if they're not, then I wanna know about it, because I'm not, I just don't feel real agreeable with them, and the way they've done things always, and how they continue to do things in that department.
Uh, just gonna ask if the north, north-south alignment is something we could maybe include in a resolution, in terms of what our preference would be. I don't know what my preference would be at this point, I mean, it's zero, obviously. But, um, if we were to have to give an answer, I'd love to give the answer we want, not the one they want.
Um, potentially, I'm just thinking of ways to verbalize that. Um, and it could be, uh, in such a manner that minimizes the number of rooftops, or, you know, what, what, what would be council's goal? And how can we capture that, um, in writing, to say, here's what we would like you to take into consideration in that alignment? And are there degrees of, you know, 100 feet this way or 100 feet that way that result in fewer rooftops?
Absolutely, and it's not just rooftops, in proximity to the water, you know, water quality. You've got that line of, uh, rose rocks, which only occurs in one place in the United States, and it's right there, so dodging that. But I can't say that that is worth more than somebody's home, or somebody's home is worth more than the entire city's drinking water. I can't, I can't really do that calculus in my head, so I didn't, you know, I'd, I'd love to study that problem on its own, as well, if that's possible.
Okay, I just wanna reiterate, like, whatever studies you have to update us on, we'd love them. And then, for AIM Norman subcommittees, like stormwater and transportation, I would really, really love to see them, uh, be able to talk to OTA about these issues. You know, those are where the experts are residing, in the subcommittees. I'd really like to hear from them, what they recommend, um, in a resolution. Because as I understood it, the first resolution that we're considering is east-west, and then the second would be north-south.
Yeah, the first, the first resolution identifies, um, those, uh, infrastructure components, frontage roads, uh, green infrastructure, multimodal pathways, uh, those types of things. We would say in the north-south, we want, w- w- it, it's harder to define because we don't know the alignment, we don't know what those impacts are, so it's harder to identify what the mitigation might be.
The subcommittees would have, like, best practices, and would have a recommendation maybe for OTA, you might consider doing this particular route over this one, because of X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, even connectivity to existing trail systems, et cetera, for a multimodal, uh, pathway, so.
And I think that's one of the considerations, like a multimodal path, that's where we'll terminate. There's, at some point, we're gonna wanna tie something north-south that's gonna get us from the north side of town to the south side of town, and eventually gonna get us to St. Lake Draper and all that. You know, we're doing a great job going along Highway 9, but where do we start going north? I think that's something that, that, that would be considered, as we start talking about the multimodal path here. So, just to kind of, uh, go over, so, the resolution, uh, we've got some sample language we've been kind of passing around a little bit in-house, but they've, uh, requested a resolution, we provided from the city of Norman, just so they've got the commitment, uh, basically indicating cooperation in the process. The things that we want to include in there is requests from the city of Norman. Uh, we've got a segment in there regarding water quality, and to make sure that they coordinate with the COMCD. Uh, we think they're a great partner. Again, the green infrastructure to protect water quality. Uh, the location of all the future inter- interchanges are laid out clearly, so that those, we'll know where those are gonna be. Uh, the two-way frontage, uh, one-way, two-lane, two-lane, one-way frontage roads. Uh, also, we're gonna ask them to maybe help us out a little bit on 36 Northwest, uh, see if we can get a little assistance there. And then the multimodal, uh, multimodal trail on the south side of the turnpike.
And based on, uh, this evening's conversation, uh, language that will address, uh, monitoring stations at points of interest, um, and we wanna go fast. If they can go fast, I mean, they have a construction budget approved. If they can go fast, great, um, our team could indicate where and what those monitoring stations look like. We'll make sure that language is included also, for your consideration.
And can we also get supervisory rights to that, so Jason can check their setup?
Oh, I would think, absolutely.
By the way, just so everybody knows, Jason actually worked with the Water Resources Board, and basically set up all of our gauging stations and, and monitoring stations we currently have, and, uh, managed that until they came here to the city of Norman. So, he's very familiar with that, and got a strong background in it here for us.
Councilmember?
Um, the 36th Avenue, does that move Franklin to more city limits?
Yeah, our goal is to go as far north and as far south off of Indian Hills as we can get.
Seeing what we can do. There are some options we have, and some ways we may be able to participate. Maybe we put the construction on them, but we just participate. Maybe we just say, why don't you just help us and build more? We don't know. That's kind of one of the things that, that we bring to council for final discussion.
We've already acquired the right-of-way, or almost there, I guess.
And all the utilities are relocated.
So, it's ready to do it.
Correct.
And we're planning to do, to come sit to Franklin first?
That's what we call Phase One. But, and part of the reason for that right now is that we don't know exactly what the limits of what the turnpike will take out of our 36th project Phase Two. So, it's hard to, to do anything. We're waiting to get that information and get it concrete, so that we can say, okay, now go back to a few changes, and now we have plans to construct the rest of it. But until we know where their limits are, we're kind of, in a wait-and-see on those plans. But then we do have Phase Three that goes from the north edge of what we think they'll be doing to city limits.
Okay.
So, we just like to, you know?
Yeah, um, I would request they do the whole thing, yeah, um, as much of it as possible. Um, and again, this, this resolution's just for the first part.
Right, and there's language in there that actually says that, 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 that's written in there. And then also, you know, they just kind of, we, what, I think we've got in there that, that they'll give us review of documents, and that we'll share documents with them back. For example, they need our design at 36 Northwest to know what to do at that, that location. They need to know what our inlet design is, that we will take over. They wanna build our style of inlet, to make sure that it, it, it meets our criteria. So, there's some things, also, the plating. If you remember, a lot of that, those plaits along the, the proposed turnpike had been preliminary plated, and we told them we'd share those with them, so that they could see that. I mean, it's, it's open record information, they could get it to courthouse tomorrow. But, you know, a little bit of sharing, a little bit of ability to be able to, to get some cooperation.
I would just say, too, the, the affirmation of a partnership is difficult, because I don't feel like this is a partnership at all. I feel like, well, I don't feel like it, this is being forced upon us, whether we like it or not, apparently. And has been from day one, so I don't know what type of partnership that is, other than us asking them to do stuff. But it's not a partnership, they haven't been a partner to us, in my observation and experience. And it's not even cooperation, where we have to apparently allow this, and there's nothing we can do. I'm still not convinced there's nothing that can be done, but, um, it does not feel like any partnership I've ever been familiar with before. So, I'm not sure about affirming that a partnership, when there isn't one, and they've never really made any attempt to have one with us. So, I don't know. I wanna ask for this stuff to be done, if it's gonna have to be done, but I'm, I don't, it's not willing on my end. Uh, it's, you know, it's against my will, that's what I'm saying.
We appreciate the size of the pill we're being asked to swallow.
You know, and my, my concerns, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, but if we don't have this agreement, do we lose 24th Avenue Northeast as an interchange, and we only get 12th, and then we lose 48th? So, we only get 60th, 12th, and 120th? And now, you know, that really cuts down on the ability to, to, to get those interchanges in, which will help get people to flow into Norman and out of Norman. Or do we start losing the improved frontage roads? And we get to a frontage road that isn't that good, that doesn't benefit Norman the way that it could, on OTA funding? Or do we start losing some of the additional stormwater initiatives that we can request and work through?
We also need to think about, you know, ambulance, um, access to both sides of the turnpike, um, you know, fire truck response and those things. Uh, so, I mean, it is important, we have a seat at the table to indicate why these intersections and, uh, underpasses of our local roads are so important. Uh, if you're on the wrong side of the street, and the ambulance has gotta go four city miles to flip a U-turn around a, a turnpike interchange, come back to the house, that means a lot.
60th Street.
Well, I, I agree that we have to plan for things that may happen, um, and be prepared for it, and try to get the best out of something we can, even if we don't want it or personally support it. Um, so I, I do understand what staff is asking, and I appreciate what you're putting together. But yes, it is a very big pill to swallow, in my opinion.
Councilmember Nash?
They're wanting us to put together a resolution to invite them to make the turnpike toll, to, is that basically what's?
No, the, 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 the turnpike is going. So, what we're doing is we're coming and saying, we would like these add-ons.
All right, let's, let's address the futility argument for a second. That just means that we're suspending all critical judgment of this project, thinking that the outcome is already predetermined. Uh, that means that it doesn't matter what the impact or the potential impact would be to our water quality. It doesn't mean that, you know, taking into consideration any effectual part of this project, because we already assume that it's going to be constructed. So, why are we even having half these conversations on, on the impact to wetlands? And, you know, leaving it up to their, uh, goodwill of the OTA to build us exactly what we want if we come to the table and are submissive? How many times has that succeeded in the past with the Turnpike Authority? You haven't looked. How did HARA turn out?
We, uh, we did have a conversation with the mayor of HARA, uh, and their city administrator. Um, and initially, when the turnpike approached nearing 60% design drawings, the city of HARA said, we're not gonna have that conversation with you. Uh, the turnpike proceeded, and the next, uh, iteration of council members said, we need to put sewer and water on the other side of the turnpike. They called the turnpike and asked, would you guys put in these sewer and water pipes for us so we can provide service to the other side of the turnpike? And the answer was, if we'd have known that, uh, at 60% design drawings, we would have been happy to. We will allow you to bore under. So, the city of HARA was hit with a $750,000 expense that would have been done at the OTA's expense when it was on paper, before it got to 60%. So, that's the most recent and probably the closest, uh, impact. And the mayor of HARA said, I encourage you to have these conversations early and often, because the impacts, I mean, it's, that turnpike goes in, it'll be all of our lifetimes when that infrastructure is there. And the more we can forecast what we're gonna need on both sides of that infrastructure, the better it will be for generations to come that won't have to fund locally what those improvements may look like.
So, we can give them our requests while also demanding accountability, right?
I would absolutely agree with that.
So, an alternate resolution, most of you have in front of you. It's not unreasonable, it doesn't say, they shall not construct this turnpike. It's demanding, there's a set of expectations for the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority. Environmental impact assessments, alternative routes, identify alternative routes, which they haven't done. Uh, you have mitigation measures to, uh, minimize adverse effects on the watershed and areas of concern and old roads traversing it. And they must engage in meaningful consultation with the city of Norman, environmental experts, and the public to ensure transparency, and community involvement, and decision, and the decision-making process. These are all things that, no, they haven't done. These are all simple, basic courtesies that they haven't done, yet we're sitting here thinking that, oh, well, if we give in, then they'll give us the additional courtesy of redesigning their turnpike to our, our desires. That's not gonna happen. That, we can demand that they just do basic stuff to ensure that we're not going to have any adverse effects to the watershed, to, or to any of the water within city limits. And it's not gonna have a single effect on whether or not they take into account the things that we request, because they're, they'd do it or they wouldn't. And, you know, it's, now, all these secret meetings that staff has without, because they are secret meetings, where they don't tell anybody on council. I think even Mr. Mayor's had some meetings with the OTA?
I had one, very first week or something that I was in office in.
Okay. Well, knowing that council is incredibly interested in this, this process, in this, in this project, and, uh, staff doesn't think to inform council that they're gonna be having these talks with the OTA, if maybe one of them wants to attend with those talks? In fact, we don't hear about it until today. Why is that?
I would say, very usual and customary in, uh, the working process between members of staff of lots of different, uh, organizations and agencies, before it goes to bodies for approval. Um, these are all considered working documents, and, uh, our ability to present them to council as quickly as possible, recognizing the level of interest and the impact this project has on our community going forward, are top priority. Very challenging to say, well, which two council members get to go negotiate on behalf of the city of Norman if two council members aren't on the same page, or don't necessarily reflect the will of the body? And that's the challenge. The will of the body is only determined when you're all together. So, our ability to get data before the body, take your direction, and return, that's kind of how the process works. It would be very difficult to not violate the Open Meetings Act and still have council members participate. I don't know how you would choose among yourselves.
Participate versus attend? And, so, council isn't allowed to attend these meetings, but we're being asked to pass a resolution about how excited and happy we are about the turnpike?
Uh, there is no action, uh, set for this evening. It's for discussion and direction for us to modify that document, as this council sees fit. So, we wanted to make sure the document we brought to you had your input and reflected the will of the body. So, yeah, no action tonight. We're taking notes, and, uh, we hope to incorporate council's feedback into the final document that you would, uh, address at a future meeting.
So, the will of the people, the will of the body, we represent people of the city. Every council member should keep that in mind when considering what to do about this resolution, and any accountability we can hold them to with a different resolution. Does the city want it, what does the city want? Do they want accountability, do they want the turnpike at all? Which is the right thing to do? And if we just assume that they're going to build this And if we just assume that they're going to build this turnpike and suspend any critical judgment of them centered around that, well, then we're betraying the people that elected us into office. Every single one of us has an obligation to fulfill the will of the people that we represent. And that, this is insane. It's insane that they would ask us to do this. But we can still demand accountability and still have just as much negotiation power as we did if we do, if we submit to them. And so, you know, that's the choice that people need to make. Do they, are they going to suspend their judgment, ignore any potential effects on our bodies of water? Are we going to ignore the fact that 2,000 people are going to lose their homes, which is the most in US history? For any road project, there's never been this large number of homes and this many people displaced. 5% of the city of Noble. And we're not, we don't even have the courage to stand up and say, we want, we demand these tests, we demand engagement with our people. How can we sit here and say that, that we're representing anybody if we're just putting our decision around this assumed futility in favor of the OTA? So I guess it's good for now.
Yes, ma'am.
In regards to this resolution, it is not undoing any previous council's resolution. This would just be saying that we want to see X, Y, and Z, like green infrastructure, there's multi-modal paths, all that, correct?
Correct.
And then, I am curious, what is the accountability in, like, if they're asking us to do a resolution for them, what is the accountability in this process?
Well, our ability to monitor 60% design drawings, 100% design drawings, and then as we're monitoring, because of all the stormwater permits that we would have tied up along this project corridor, we will be monitoring that construction project from the first turn of the shovel until traffic begins to flow. And our ability to say, we have a stormwater quality violation, this needs to be addressed immediately, we have that conversation with the development community in Norman regularly. We do that often and we've got a great track record of doing it to ensure our water quality stays safe.
What happens if we butt heads with OTA over some of these details? Where does this resolution put us and position for, you know, them being more open?
I would say i- i- if, if council considers a resolution, it provides you a seat at the table to be engaged in regular dialogue. If, if, if we opt not to participate with a resolution in these requests, they will do what they choose to do and we can yell and I don't even know if there's legal action if they didn't even follow their own design standards in that situation. So, once the state Supreme Court says, go forth and build it, there's not a lot of room for appeal or, I mean, we could, we could protest if we witness DEQ violations that we see and we have staff members with expertise who would recognize those kinds of violations. And, I mean, we could raise issues like that along the way. So our accountability requires our participation, observation, and reporting back to council what we see often.
Well, now, part of that's not necessarily true, is it, Mr. File?
Describe which piece.
The part where Supreme Court's giving them full reign to push the turnpike through the city?
That is my understanding, what the turnpike authorized and unless Mr. Knighton has some insight as to where, there are windows or challenge points to that project going forward, I am unaware.
Yeah, you're correct. I mean, the case that got filed before the Supreme Court for issuing of the bonds, the Supreme Court essentially said, we are the sole body to get to make the determination as to whether this project goes through or not, and they made the determination that it does. And that's, for our purposes, there really isn't anybody else for us to appeal to. The Oklahoma Supreme Court is the Supreme Court in Oklahoma and they get to make that determination and they've made it. We were parties to that litigation, there were a number of other entities that filed protests. So from the judicial perspective, people have had their opportunity to voice their objections before the Supreme Court with regard to this particular project and the Supreme Court has issued a ruling that says OTA can proceed with issuing the debt and building the turnpike. A lot of the arguments that I hear being made were made during that litigation and there's a concept of either issue a claim before you, which essentially is if you've had the opportunity to raise a particular issue before a court and you did, or you chose not to, once there's a final decision, it settles any of those claims that were either raised or that could have been raised. So again, a number of entities filed protests. Obviously, there was an extended timeframe with regard to the issuance of that decision, but once it's been issued, that pretty is the end of the line with regard to litigation in terms of whether or not the turnpike can be built. Now, there may be some questions with regard to actual implementation. I mean, if we thought that something was being done negligently or as if the city manager talked about, if there were other violations, DEQ, clean water, so on and so forth. Those issues have not been litigated and you might be able to bring those up, but again, you would have to wait until those events occur before you could do that.
No person, firm, partnership or corporation or any of the partners, officers, managers or employees there, shall pollute or permit pollution of the water supply of municipality or any stream pond, stream, pond, spring, lake, or other water reservoir or groundwater offer, which is used or which is being held for use as a water supply by municipality? That sounds a lot, like we do have the authority to protect our water supply.
The operative words in that statute for me are polluted or allowed to pollute. So I would be looking for evidence today that someone has polluted the water or allowed the water to be polluted. And I don't, I don't know of any evidence that shows that.
So, can you say that again? You're, you're relying on having evidence that they polluted using a, by a turnpike that hasn't been built yet?
That's correct. The operative language is polluted or allowed to be polluted. So I don't know of any evidence that someone has either polluted like Thunderbird or allowed someone to pollute.
Well, there's a huge body of evidence showing that interstates, highways source pollution to the environment around them.
That language in that statute, to me, requires evidence today that someone has either polluted or allowed to be polluted that reservoir. And there is no such evidence. It goes back to, and I believe there's some language from the court in one of those opinions that talks about the court's refusal to make a determination based on what someone might do in the future. It, I suppose there is a possibility that someone will pollute like Thunderbird, but we don't get to move forward with regard to requesting relief under that provision until we have evidence that that has occurred. And currently, there is no evidence that that's occurred.
So we have no rights to protect our water supply?
I don't think I said that. I think what I said is that particular statute requires an act. Someone either polluted or allowed to be polluted. Currently, there is no evidence that that has occurred. So if we're talking about that particular statute, as we sit here today, there's no basis for us to go sue anybody to request damages under 37116 as a result of something that's been done to like, to like Thunderbird. That evidence doesn't exist.
So, when going back to considering whether or not we will ever be able to sue the OTA for their polluting of our water supply, I argue we would not. There would be nothing that we could do to rectify that situation. We would be in a situation that we can't fix, but we have, we ha- do have the power to try to at least mitigate it by requiring that they perform, or at least passing a resolution strongly, insisting that they perform adequate environmental studies to certain, that's reviewed by us and ideally other entities, engagement with this, with the public. But we as the council can't even go there and talk to them in any of these meetings. So, I was talking with the mayor of Midwest City earlier today, explaining to him the resolution, the, and, you know, he is in agreement with our protection of the water supply. I'm waiting on Dell City Mayor to contact me back, but, you know, the language of this resolution that I've proposed is subject to change a little bit because Midwest City Mayor wants to make this a joint resolution. He's sending it to his staff right now to be reviewed and is willing to join with us in a joint resolution, encouraging and enforcing these asks that we have of the OTA.
By what authority do you ask another town to be able to do a joint resolution?
I can call the mayor of Midwest City if I want to call the mayor of Midwest City.
But if you're sitting down there making, making joint resolutions without the rest of us coming in and saying, we'd like to partner with Midwest City and do that.
It's a proposed resolution. I have full authority to write a proposed resolution that I bring in front of this council.
Mind your tone, please.
Sorry.
You have, you write any resolution you want, but it takes all of us working together to be able to make things work right.
It takes five of us to do the right thing.
That's correct.
Only five.
Okay. Leave the other ones out? Are you done, sir? Because there's another question.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
I actually just want to speak to Councilmember Nash's comments here. First, I want to say, you know, I got to commend him and Dr. Serato and whoever else put their fingerprints on this because it's clear that you put a lot of work into it, put a lot of thought into it. I think there's a lot of good content in there, but the things it doesn't have are the things on the screen. The things on the screen that don't, doesn't have, some of the things are in here. So, to me, I think the balance lies somewhere in the middle. It's not a decision if it's this resolution or if it's that resolution. It's a marriage of the two somehow. And so if I was going to give the staff any kind of direction, it would be to workshop both resolutions, see what, you know, the good content you can pull out of this one that varies up what we're trying to accomplish and try to check as many boxes as possible. And with any such document, when it becomes agendized, it's before council, that could even be amended from the floor again. So it's not final until council says it's final. So what we would have, we would add to that list, those additional monitoring stations we got from this evening's conversation and staff will jump into that resolution and bring you hopefully the best of both worlds.
Well, and part of the other thing too, I think, and, and, and I'll get to you in a second, is, is that, is the roles between council and staff. Council looks at large deals. We don't look at each nut and bolt that goes in. That's staff to be able to say that. So there are a lot of things that staff needs to talk about to their fellow peer. That's redundant. But anyway, to their peer to be able to, to make these things happen. That's what we're telling them now. We would like this, whether, as a combination, however, what's on the board, however. That's what, what our job is, the 30,000-foot level. And then make sure that that works when you guys come back with an answer. For us to figure out where to put the MPDES monitors and all the rest of that is way out of our way. We can, yes, sir.
To Councilmember Peacock's point, I would like to see both the proposed resolution on the screen and the draft that Councilmember Nash put together, combined into one.
Happy to do that. I think we've got the capabilities now.
Accountability as well as what is presented on the screen.
Yes, sir.
Can we also, to Councilman Holman's point, if we're going to leave the partnership language in there, can we seek some sort of definition of what that partnership looks like between the city of Norman and the OTA? Because it seems very quid pro quo after the fact right now.
And every good contract, there's a definition of terms. Yeah, and I think there's, yeah, resolution form and format that could provide that glossary component.
And I understand the way that they operate and the way that they've operated in the past, and if that's the way that we have to adhere moving forward, then so be it. But I've never been in a contract situation where, you know, you either tell me you love me or you get nothing kind of thing. So that, that would, that just to, I would like just any kind of firm language around that to show what a partnership really looks like between us and them. Beyond us doing a resolution to invite them into our city to, against the will of our people?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm also for a hybrid. One thing I did like was this reiteration that this wasn't something we wanted. Is it possible to say that we are coming to the table that acknowledge that the people at the table fundamentally do not want this thing, but we are dealing with it and so X, Y, and Z is what we want out of this?
Well, and, and, and a thing that I don't know if we know when we talk about the will of the people. I don't know if we've ever surveyed that scenario. I hear from business owners and community members who think this is going to be a wonderful thing. Council took an action. We adopted a resolution that said, we don't, we don't want you and we brought litigation against the process. That was, that was, we got our day at court. We had that. Not being successful in that, I, I, there's, there's absolutely no harm in us identifying in that resolution how we got here. And I, I think when we talk about the will of the people, it, that's kind of an interesting question. It would be interesting to know what the, if we were to do a survey to figure out what you think council? The will of the council is what counts.
Yeah, I was going to say, I feel like most of us have gotten, even if there are people that are supportive, I feel like there are many more people, especially those impacted by potentially losing their homes that are not.
Oh, no doubt about it.
We're also in a weird position of trying to create more housing, some of it affordable, and here we are, losing potentially up to 600 rooftops, potentially. So I, I would like to just say how we got here and that in entering this, like, you know, this is where we're at, this is what, we're in good faith trying to procure.
That is a, I think, a brilliant way to couch that conversation. We are here in good faith for the best interest of Norman residents. That's.
Also, I think the Medegenta head of brief, did she get to?
No, she, she spoke.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You got anything else? Do you have anything else for us, sir?
We would like to, we need to get this submitted before the 6% plans are complete. We would like to try to bring a resolution back on the 13th so that you can have time to consider it if there's more change necessary or more items that we need to include. That gets us to the 27th. I think if we wait until the first meeting in September, we may have missed our opera, our window of opportunity. So we, we'll want to bring something to you at that, at that meeting and we'll do this presentation and then we'll have a new resolution that will be attached to that and then we can take council's decision.
If it needs to be a resolution instead of a letter or?
It's a resolution.
Yeah, they have, they, yeah, they have indicated that the resolution is the official document.
They do have, they are getting resolutions from all the communities that are impacted. So it's not just Norman, they're not just signaling us out. I'm understanding some of the communities have already done it. Cleveland County's currently working on theirs too, so.
No deal? Well, council, we are adjourned.